Hey Doug.
Hello.
Andy Nick. Well, so we have, we got. Andy's on, Nick's on. Stephanie, Emily, I saw Emily before.
I'm on, Joe's on.
Joe's on, thanks Joe. So we have a quorum. Am I correct, Stephanie?
So I have Joe, Peter, Kathy, Leif, who else from the board?
Doug.
Doug.
And Nathan's coming, I talked to Nathan just a half hour ago, he'll be on. Okay, it's 7:01.
Was Kevin coming on tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I talked to him earlier yesterday, he said he was.
Okay, for him.
Okay, so it's May 13th, it's time for our. Planning Board meeting, 7:02. Nick, we had no work sessions, do we have anything scheduled for our next meeting?
We do, we have two, and they are ONX1 and Cravick Drive.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Let me have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion, Joe.
Joe, thank you.
Nathan will second.
Nathan, welcome Nathan, all in favor?
Kathy, I.
I.
Joe, I.
Joe, I.
Peter, I. Thank you. First on the agenda is Verizon. Pardon? Lighting Plan, supplemental site plan review for facility expansion approved. Industrial District, any questions Stephanie, I see we've got our notes and I've got the resolution.
Yeah, that's right, they submitted a revised photometric drawing on Wednesday evening and that all met code. I think that that one is good to approve, checks out.
Any, any questions on the part of the rest of the board? Okay, here none, I'll make a motion to approve the lighting plan as presented. This is an amendment to the Planning Board approval of the project dated April 8th, 2021. And said approval to in full force and effect and unmodified, including any conditions therein except as specifically modified herein. That's the motion, second.
I'll second.
Yeah, you got it.
Whichever.
All in favor?
Kathy, I.
I.
Leif, I.
Joe, I.
Peter, Peter, I.
Doug, I.
Thank you. Project Orange Lighting and Signage Package.
Was anyone present for Verizon?
Yes, this is John with DLB, we're the AE on the project.
Thank you, John.
Tidy, tidy, tidy. I missed having to be able to sign those and give them to the applicant.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, everyone, bye now.
Bye.
Project Orange Lighting, do you, Stephanie, do you have any other issues on this, this looks pretty cut and dry.
Yes, I believe that we covered all the bases as far as the open items. And they recently received their ZBA approval for their signed package. We've gone over the lighting extensively. And we know that they are lighting the site as well as the area under their canopy. And I have no further questions on that.
Okay, I would just say sidebar for me, I was over there yesterday. Excuse me, just looking at, it looks a great project, I've not been inside, but the outside looks excellent. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the lighting signage. A little slow here because my type is about microfishing sites. The signage and landscaping plan is submitted with the finding that it's a modification of approval of the board dated July 7th, 2020 and accept as modified herein. Approval remains in full force and effect and unmodified, including any conditions thereof except that the. Condition to obtain approval of lighting signage and landscaping for this project satisfied is satisfied. With the further condition that the applicant note that the final plans of the zoning board of appeal approvals were granted on the project. That's the motion.
To clarify, what we want the applicant to do, please, before they submit the final plans, is to notate the, each of the ZBA variances that were granted.
And were all of the variances granted or any conditions to them?
Only condition is that they return to the planning board, which they did.
They were all granted. That's the motion, may I have a second?
Nathan, one second.
Joe? All in favor?
Kathy, I.
Nick and I.
Leif, I.
Doug, I.
Peter, you're right, motion passed unanimously, congratulations.
And who was here for the applicants, if I can mark that, please?
Byron DeLuque with Montant de Construction, hi Jamie.
Thank you Byron.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Okay, Manlis Pebble Hill, I apologize, it's Mios. Manlis Pebble Hill.
Good evening, Mr. Weber.
Yes, sir, who do we have?
This is Adam Sayer from the Manlis Pebble Hill.
Okay, yeah, welcome.
Mr. Warden, Town of Dewitt Planning Board members, just on behalf of Manlis Pebble Hill School, the head of school and the board of trustees, we're grateful for your time. Very thankful for the meticulous nature with which you've spent reviewing and providing comments on the farmhouse gateway project. Really, we really appreciate all your efforts and your partnership here. As I stated last time, I'm not going to reiterate the goals and objectives of the project. But again, really thankful for the partnership here and, and welcome any questions you might have.
Okay, Emily or Stephanie, do you want to make a comment on where we are? Relative to the tradition?
I'm sorry, we are getting some feedback from a caller. I am going to mute that line, if you need to make a comment later, please call back in. Alright, so the applicant has submitted revised plans just this afternoon. I'm sorry, I'm having a technical difficulty and not able to pull them up at the moment. And there were a couple of comments on the site as I was looking through the information that was provided. It looks like there was some slight excess of. Like the maximum lighting levels that are allowed, and that would be eight foot candles. Thank you, Emily. So that was something that Nick and I had talked about earlier, and we were curious if there was a need to have lighting levels. Of that nature there, if there was a way that they could be adjusted to be just under the code max.
Stephanie, this is Ed Kaplinger, they can be adjusted, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Okay, next on the lighting, as the fixture that was provided for the, the ceiling fixture is not either flush or recessed, which is a requirement of canopy or ceiling mounted lighting. So that one is not able to be approved, is there a way that you could provide a different co-compliant fixture?
We can do that.
Okay. Thank you, and then Emily, would you mind pulling up the site plans? The last comments to go out on this project were to keep the parking stalls within the landscape islands here. We noticed that the striping had kind of extended into the drive aisle, and on one side, the sidewalk and the lawn area was pulled down to be in line with the end of the stalls. And it doesn't quite extend all the way down to both ends of the new straws that will be striped, this is kind of hanging out in the middle of the drive aisle. This does as well. So we were wondering if this could be pulled down and in line to keep this kind of neatly tucked in here. And the intention is to keep this pedestrian crossing as short of a stretch across the drive aisle as possible. And that is going to be like greatly decreased, and I think it would really clean it up and tie it into what's there. I feel like the survey looks a little bit different than what's shown in the aerial imagery.
Well, we, we will definitely take a look at that and see if we can narrow it up and, and meet the intent of what you're looking for.
That'd be great. Okay, are there any questions from the board members on that?
Are there any other questions, anything else that you have, Stephanie?
I know that there was some ongoing discussion regarding the building architecture and the compatibility with the existing historic structure. So. We had looked at some historic design guidelines from the National Register of Historic Places, and there was some discussion about. The conditions that the applicant has met in trying to meet everything in those design guidelines. So I guess I put this back to the planning board members to see if they felt like this application has adequately addressed that.
I think that's my cue.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say Doug, you took the words out of my mouth.
Are there any updated architectural plans or any responses to the feedback that was given to MPH? Because I didn't see any in today's. Package.
Mr. Rena, I think we responded two times to do two various comments about the standards of rehabilitation. We provided pretty extensive comments on building exterior wood, different sections that are highlighted in those guidelines. So, you know, care and feeding for exterior roofs, windows, entrances and porches. I think you've hopefully seen those and had a chance to review those.
Nick, is this, is this in addition to the first, the first response letter that was circulated? I've only seen one letter.
I think I've only seen one letter as well.
I think my, my questions, and maybe they hadn't been responded to, but my questions really had to do with the windows. And just getting some more information about the, the, the sightlines and the mutton profiles, which are all very historic. And given that the date of this, of this building. I just had some questions about the roof membrane, it wasn't really clearly labeled on the drawings where the bright white TPO roof would be installed, given that there's a couple of low slope roofs. So that wasn't quite clear to me. And just really the visibility of it, I know that the upper cupola roof in the, in the main portion of the, of the building is, is pretty well hidden, but I think there are some view sheds where. That membrane could be quite a stark contrast, so I just wanted to hear some feedback. Yes.
I don't think that's the feedback we were looking for.
Hey Adam, can you pull up the letter you sent to Andy and Nick?
I can, yes sir, I'm working on that right now, I apologize.
Adam provided a very detailed response to your, your original letter.
Yeah, so Mr. Rena, if that's okay, I'll, I'll try and present this letter and run through it fairly quickly. I think you had a question on the building exterior, I think you said paint the entire building or partial. And I'll read our answer, which is A, MPH plans to have the entire exterior of the farmhouse structure painted. On the exterior roof side, I think you asked if the TPO is bright white. Our answer, MPH has reviewed the options for the various roof replacements, we're proposing a gray colored TPO membrane in lieu of white in all roof locations. Question two, which is what is the proposed for the porch roof, we said a gray colored TPO membrane. Repair types, the existing white TPO roof, MPH plans to match all or repair in kind. Edge flashing details, MPH is proposing a white painted metal roof edge that will match the color of the paint on the existing adjacent wood trim. With, with regard to building windows, on the exterior replacement windows, yes, we are planning to replace the windows and preserve the interior and exterior casings. Question two was regarding the dividing lights, mutant sizes and casing materials. We plan to use simulated divided lights, mutant sizes will be similar to the exterior windows, the existing windows. And we plan to preserve the interior and exterior casings. Is there a change in the sightlines compared to the existing? Our intent is to provide new energy efficient windows that have similar sightlines to the existing windows. Regarding your questions on the exterior entrances and the porches. You said polycarbonate or ground face concrete block are modern building materials, concerned about how they may be juxtaposed. So MPH has spent extensive time reviewing a number of choices on the concrete block. We're proposing a split face block in lieu of ground face, it would provide similar color and texture to the existing natural stone. The polycarbonate roof system will be mounted to the wood framing of the trellis, and it'll have minimal visual impact, but will really provide daylight covered at the entry points. So we shared this, I think, on May 11th, so apologize for you not receiving that.
That, that letter, we would like to make that letter part of the approval. Doug, I thought everyone had received that, I apologize. I actually thought you responded to it, but I, you might have responded to something else.
I think it was the first letter that was circulated that I had. So, that nonetheless, yeah, thank you, again, thank you very much for your attention to this project. And, you know, in putting the time and the effort. And I think this would be, this is going to be a successful project. So regarding the windows, do you know, just a technical question, do you know if, if the simulated glass windows will have spacers on the inside and the outside of the glass panels and inside the glass panels?
It's a good question, I believe Leland Kayler Rice is with us here, we've looked at a Marvin window, I believe it's part of the Elevate series, but Leland, can you shed more light onto that?
Yeah, thank you for the question, we are currently specifying a spacer to, at the simulated divided lights.
Great, that's great. And then, and just for the, the foundation of the, of the addition, is there? What? Had you looked at using a stone similar to the ashlar, kind of stacked ashlar stone on the, on the main foundation of the house? Kind of tie it together?
We, we did look at that, and I think that during cost estimating, which we spent, I'd say, Adam, what was it, over a month doing that? Going through that process with three different estimators. We needed to try to find something that was similar, but maybe not an actual natural stone product. That's when we gravitated towards a, a concrete block veneer. And ultimately, I think the MPH has sort of found the, the split face to have a texture and sort of simulate, be similar to the stone while, and also fitting within the budget.
Yeah, and Mr. Rena, to follow up, that, that split face rock with the texture, you'll see that across campus and other places as well, so. We, we spent a significant amount of time looking at that, that detail.
I think that would be a concern, I think it still is a concern. I mean, regarding the polycarbonate, I mean, would you say is the intent to make that as invisible as possible, I'm assuming that's why it is?
It is, yes, thank you. Yeah, our intent is to mount the, it's a very, you know, small frame that sort of snaps in with the panels. They have just sort of a, you know, a no, zero sightline at the edge, and they mount to the top of the structure, so fairly concealed and. You know, an effort to provide some daylighting and also coverage at those entry points.
And can I assume that you're going to be painting it the same red color?
The trellis?
No, I mean, the entire, the entire house, the building.
Oh, yeah, we're looking to mimic the, I think there are a few places where there's some inconsistencies, but we're looking to be in the white and red, you know, color of the farmhouse absolutely.
Is that it Doug?
Yes, thank you, Peter.
Well, thank you for, this is sort of a first for a lot of us in terms of what we're looking at. Any other questions on the part of the rest of the board?
Peter, if you do want to move forward with the motion, I would suggest that in, in lieu of. The number two condition about the roof that we had on there, if we just. Say that the letter dated May 11th is part of this approval, then everything on the letter will be accomplished. I think that would probably cover it, Doug, do you agree?
Yes, I do.
Say the letter of May 11th?
Correct.
Okay.
But keep that condition about the paint, because I don't think it was noted anyplace else.
Yeah, I would add that, can, added about the paint and the same thing for the spacer and the simulated divided light windows.
Okay.
Can you tell me, tell me those words about the simulated divided window, please?
The spacer within the simulated divided light windows.
Has to do what?
Oh, it's provided, it will be included.
Okay.
Alright, I'll let you read that last condition, I'll, I'll take.
Will do, will do.
Motion to approve the plan is submitted with the following findings and conditions. Orders review of the. County Planning Board referral which, May, which in their, on May 12th, 2021. No significant adverse inter-community or countywide implications to the project. This board has reviewed the project and has reviewed the, has reviewed the project and notes the historical significance of the farmhouse, which is part of the Manlis Pebble Hill campus. While Dewitt does not have historical preservation regulations, its architectural approval for the board is. Reviewed in the project in the context that of its historical nature. Board members have lent their expertise in this matter, and this, the Manlis Pebble Hill design team has responded, excuse me, responded with attention to details in as much as feasible. And present a project that pays attention to historical aspects of the design accordingly. The plan is approved as presented with the following conditions, that a, the paint color of the farmhouse matches current existing color. And that includes the, encompasses the entire farmhouse, should we say red, or do you want to just?
Well. Existing, because.
Matching.
What color that is.
Because it's actually white.
Number two, so fill in the blanks here, Jamie.
And then we have the condition that the spacer within the simulated divided light window will be provided. And number three, that all. Items noted on the May 11th, 2021 letter of MPH will be complied with.
This motion is made with further condition, this plan together with other submitted documents, quote site plan documents that have been signed by the Planning Board Chairperson, the applicant, and requires that all of the work. Shown be completed by the applicant in order for the certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, deletions, the scope of work or materials from the site plan. Documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to the Town of Dewitt Code Section 192-122. I move, that's the motion, may I have a second, Doug, would you like a second?
I'm sorry, Peter, that doesn't include the site discussion items that we had just covered.
Right.
Alright.
Okay. Which were, which were. The code compliant fixture is to be replaced, right Stephanie?
That's correct.
Code compliant light fixture?
Reduced lighting. Town code maximum.
Reduced, yeah.
And that the walk area will be decreased? Is that the?
The driveway.
The walk area within the driveway, was that it?
Oh, you're talking about the islands, the islands will be, you know, the curving will be brought out to match the, the parking stall depth.
Okay.
And the drive aisle will be narrowed accordingly.
Yes.
And the lighting, was the lighting brought into compliance, did you get that?
Yep.
Okay. Is that it Stephanie?
Yes.
Alright, that's the motion.
And if I can't, before you do the second, what would be the procedure for the applicant to comply with those last couple of conditions?
Might be dealt with on a staff level?
Yeah, administratively.
Thank you.
You ready Doug?
I will happily make a second to the motion.
Thank you Doug. All in favor?
Nathan, I.
Joe, I.
Leif, I.
Doug, I.
Kevin.
Peter, I. Kathy, I, I want to commend Doug, A, for bringing some things to our attention and, and especially to the Manlis Pebble Hill folks for, A, their support of education and quality education in the town. And what they've done to preserve this to the best of their ability, this, this wonderful structure. So thank you very much and congratulations.
Yeah, thank you to each of you, we're incredibly excited to get this project underway and appreciate the partnership, thank you very much.
I have one more question, we have Leland on the phone, what's Leland's last name?
Kayler Rice, it's hyphenated.
Can you spell that?
Yes. First part is Kayler, K-O-E-H-L-E-R, hyphen Rice, R-I-C-E.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the. Sorry, say something? Next up on the agenda is Geiger Automotive, I know we've got Mr. Geiger here, members of his team. Andy, you want to take the lead on this with the, where we are?
Sure. So we, we got some comments just recently, I think the board was, was getting closer to. Culminating this project, I think the, the vertical panels in the back of the building, where we thought that there was going to be a horizontal. Application to that, a detail was not necessarily the case, I think the board is, is, needs to make a determination on that. We had some sidewalks that the applicant, I believe, agreed to do, we just haven't worked out the details with the sidewalks. The signage was the other issue, which we're going to hold off from this approval and, and do that separately. We had some architectural, we had requested some architectural bollards along the east side of the building. To protect the sidewalk area from the vehicles parking along the side of the building. Have yet to be submitted, but the applicant agreed to submit something for that for us.
For our approval, yes.
Right. And I think that might have been it, if I'm not mistaken.
I just want to declare, sorry Peter, I wanted to clarify that the bollards would be needed to separate the parking stalls from the sidewalk. from the sidewalk, just to protect, you know, the pedestrian walkway. So it not only wraps around the eastern side of the building, but also the northern side as well.
There's a proposed condition on here, Stephanie, that an architectural bollard is required along Goulster Road at the front entrance. And are you saying something else?
Well, yeah, the whole front entrance.
Yeah, right. And the whole front entrance, okay?
So I would just simply say, Jamie, the north side and the east side of the building where parking stalls are but the sidewalk.
Okay.
And that, that'll be submitted for planning board or administrative and planning board approval.
Yep.
Yes.
So can we take a minute and discuss the, the panels on the back of the building so that we're all very clear as to what we're getting on this?
Can I just jump in quick? This is Emily. I just, I just wanted to, I know we're talking about having bollards for, for the parking stalls, but just making sure that these doors are also protected so that they can't be struck by a car and hit somebody coming out.
Okay.
Right.
So that would, would, how would that read on a, on a motion then?
It's still the north side.
East side.
Well, the parking stalls above the sidewalk and also.
And, and all man doors.
And all man doors. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So then, with regard to the metal panel, I think the last time we spoke, an image was shared with us which showed the ribbing running, running horizontally, but then there was also kind of like a relief joint at various stages throughout the vertical panel, so that it made it look like it was a metal panel to, you know, complement the one in the front of the building. What I think was submitted is a linear ribbed panel, which will just have ribbing which runs from grade to parapet line for the full height of the building. Is that accurate?
Hi Nate, this, this is Andy Wright with QPK. That is accurate. The, the picture that you saw was the manufacturer's cut sheet. So when you look at the actual vertical panel, it was the isometric detail on the bottom right of the image. Unfortunately, in that same image, it illustrated a different panel and that's what you're referencing, the horizontal lines. That's never been our intent to have the horizontal. That's why they, from day one, illustrated going vertical. Yep, that's, so that, what you're looking at right now is an embossed panel with the striations going vertical.
And I, I, yeah, I understand all of that. I think, you know, I understand the, the cut sheet and the product that was submitted. I think where the disconnect is, is I think what we were talking about last week was not this.
It wasn't necessarily. It, it was. That was part of the cut sheet. If you look at the cut sheet that was brought up last week, that, it's almost the same image on the right. It's an X on, an isometric image showing a blue panel going vertical.
Right, but when we were talking about the, the look of the building at that side, at that end of the building, the discussion was that, you know, these things had kind of a horizontal bending to them almost.
The detail was horizontal inside the vertical panel versus a vertical detail inside a vertical panel.
So there's only one, there's only one manufacturer that, that I know of that has a horizontal panel, horizontal striation and a vertical panel, and that's Centria, and that panel is three to four times the cost. No manufacturer other than that, that particular one makes it, and it's because to lay out the sheet, there's so much extra waste when they fabricate that panel.
You know, we understand that. I think it was, Nathan was pointing out the fact that we, somebody had mentioned from your team that actually there were horizontal etchings that accomplished what we were looking for.
All right, this is.
So this is what we have and this is where we, we have to make the decision about.
Hello, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you Rob.
Hi, this is Rob Geiger. I, I was the one that provided the link last time to the cut sheet. Andy was not able to see it and he mentioned in the meeting that that is the panel, however, the cut sheet might not be representative of what we had. And, and I appreciate the comment about the facade. But as we all know, this building will be located on the corner of a dead-end road. So every single customer that approaches our building must view the front of the building before turning onto Goulster Road. I consider the view from Manly's Center Road the introduction to our customer. Even with that being the case, we have spent hours looking at other buildings and pictures and driving around Dewitt and the Syracuse area to see various styles that exist. After hours of research, as Andy stated, there is not a horizontal panel that, that works. And, and I have a couple of reasons why that would be. The vertical panels actually will complement the panels used on the front of the house. They appear smooth from a distance. If we were to introduce two horizontal panels that are similar but not the same, we believe that creates a situation where the lines do not actually line up correctly. And I believe that creates a detriment to the facade of the building. The current material market conditions are volatile and changing the panel now will add significant risk time, risk to time and cost that will jeopardize the project. I do believe it is important to create a visual distinction between the customer areas and the employee-only areas of our building. I believe the chosen vertical panel achieves this without sacrificing the visual presentation of the building. So I do apologize for the confusion I may have created. However, we do take the comment seriously and.
Thank you. Nathan, anything else on this?
No, I guess I just, no.
Any other board members? All right, I, I would ask, Jamie, I've, I've got some allergies. My eyes are watering. Could you read?
I certainly can.
Thank you.
This applicant was granted a specific permit pursuant to section 192-123 of the Town zoning code for a commercial garage within the industrial zoning district and was also granted a height variance on the building and a zero lot line variance for the building, which is at the property line, which has a shared border with the Village of East Syracuse. This board has reviewed the county planning resolution of January 27, 2021, which noted the following modification. Per the New York State Department of Transportation, no access to Manly's Center Road will be permitted and the existing driveways must be removed. This site plan complies with that modification. Further, the county planning board has determined that the applicant must continue to coordinate with the department regarding additional requirements for review of the stormwater pollution prevention plan and a lighting plan. Any work in the state right-of-way, including work to remove driveways, is subject to a work permit. Municipality must ensure any mitigation as may be determined by the department is reflected on the project plans prior to or as a condition of municipal approval. No glare or spillover onto adjacent properties or the state right-of-way will be permitted. This modification is accepted by this board and specifically, there is no access on this plan to Manly's Center Road. Further, with respect to the lighting, no lighting is approved as part of this approval. And with the condition, and the condition with respect to the lighting plan shall be taken into account in future approval of the lighting plan. As part of this recommendation to the ZBA on the specific permit and area variance, the planning board committed to work with the applicant to present a design that is more pedestrian-centric in its presentation. Accordingly, conditions of this approval are, an architectural bollard is required along the north and east side where parking stalls above the sidewalk and along all man doors. Also, the applicant must present a sidewalk detail which shows a connection from the sidewalk along the building on the south side to Goulster Road. The configuration so reasonably work with the topography of the land. With respect to these two conditions, the plans for this, for the same must be submitted to the Town Department of Planning and Development and will be reviewed administratively, subject to planning board approval, which approval shall be part of the approval herein. No building permit will be issued until the above conditions are met. Further conditions, no signing is approved as part of this approval. A separate sign plan must be submitted to the planning board and must include wayfinding signage in accordance with the town code at the driveway entrance to address patrons toward the customer service bays. No lighting is approved as part of this plan. The applicant must prevent a full lighting plan. The subdivision is approved of this property as of the date hereof must be filed with the County of Anadaga and all conditions of the subdivision approval must be met. Finally, this plan together with other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson and the applicant requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials from the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to Town of Dewitt code section 192-122.
Thank you Jamie. Did that resolution include submitting the product data on the bollards for review?
It.
Because I do think that.
Certainly. Yes, which they would usually have to do when they submit, so I'll, I'll put that in there if you like. The plans and the product detail, okay?
And I guess I ask, is that something that the, is that something that staff is reviewing or is that coming back in front of the board?
Come back, the staff and then to the planning board.
Okay.
Right, subject to planning board approval, so it may be more informal, but I think that was the intent.
Yeah. Okay, there's the motion. May I have, that's the motion.
He's going to make it. Someone needs to make it.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Doug, thank you. All in favor?
Doug, aye.
Doug, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Nathan, aye.
Aye, aye.
Peter, aye. Kathy? Kathy's muted. Okay.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate your forbearance with this.
Thank you very much.
The subdivision's up next, correct? Not sure if they want to hang out for that.
Let me read that.
I believe that.
Geiger subdivision approval. This is a motion to approve the subdivision plan as presented with the following findings and condition. Number one, this board reviewed County Planning Board Resolution 331, 2021, which found no significant adverse inter-community or county-wide implications to the subdivision. This board reviewed the EAF submitted by the applicant and issues a negative C core declaration for this project. Three, the applicant must provide a declaration of easement agreement to be reviewed by in satisfaction of the Town Planning Board Attorney with respect to the quote proposed ingress and egress easement and quote shown on the subdivision plan from the premises to East Syracuse Lot 1. To serve as a, and the premises, the Town of Dewitt, the declaration easement must be filed simultaneously with the subdivision map and proof of the filing to be submitted to the town. Number four, applicant, file the subdivision map in Anadaga County Clerk's Office in accordance with the rules of Anadaga County and provide a copy of the stamped filed map with the Town of Dewitt Department of Planning and Zoning. That's the motion.
I'll make a second.
Okay, Lee made the motion second.
Nathan will second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Nathan, aye.
Aye, aye.
Doug, aye.
Kathy, aye.
Peter, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Unanimous. Thank you all.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, thank you. Look forward to seeing the project. Last item on the agenda, this is a, a update on the Butternut Senior Housing, and I think we probably have some members in the audience. We have a few, Stephanie, how many do we have?
Scott and Tom Douglas.
Okay.
It looks like there might be almost two dozen members of the public here.
So, just to provide an orientation to the, the neighborhood and neighbors and members of the public that we're reviewing the Butternut Senior Housing project. We're reviewing whether we should make a recommendation to the town board for zoning change to R3 from R2 for the construction of a senior housing complex in a residential R2 district. And, and we appreciate all of the input from the neighbors. We received, I think, all of the copies. It's very difficult in the, when the village is closed to have to do Pony Express and but there is email, but we appreciate all of the input from, from the neighbors and, from the applicant and especially from the planning board. And we've had no less than six meetings and dozens of conversations relative to this. It's a very important impact in this area. It's further complicated or accentuated by the fact that Shopping Town, the RFP, the proposals have been submitted and we'll learn in a few weeks the direction of the multi-use 67 acres that Shopping Town Development will have that will complement this particular area, one way, shape, form, or another. So, in discussion with the planning board, with the staff, planning development, attorney, we really, there's, were several items that although on one hand we felt comfortable recommending to the town board, on the other hand, we really feel that there's some detail relative to parking, relative to the colors, the traffic study. We had always asked for a full traffic study and several other options that we had chosen to exercise. And I, I guess at this point, I'd like the applicant to make a comment as to where they are at this point relative to furthering the recommendation to the, the, the town board but in satisfying some of the issues both that the planning board has raised as well as the neighbors have raised. Tom, is that something?
Yes, thank you Chairman Weber and respective board members. We have taken to heart the comments that the neighbors have made regarding the respective project. And also, under the advisement of the board, we have asked our engineer, traffic engineer, RZ Engineering, Rudy Zona, he's going to reach out to Mark Parrish. Are you, are you all able to hear us?
Yes.
Okay, we lost the signal, I'm sorry. He's going to contact Mark Parrish. I think they've already spoken and commence with a, a traffic study to support the project, in-depth traffic analysis.
Just to jump in quick, we're going to, we're going to set the param, we're going to ask the town engineer, Mark Parrish, what the parameters are relative to Butternut and Kenny Road and, and review that proposal with the town engineer and share it with the board before we commence with that proposal. So we've reached out to Mark and we're going to share that proposal with you before we get started. Until we see the parameters of that study, we will then report back what the duration of, what it would take to complete that. I just wanted to throw that in. And they've been in contact late this afternoon. They're going to have further discussions tomorrow. We'll share that proposal with you shortly.
Many of the neighbors had an opportunity to, it's public information, to view the video. Unfortunately, I think the video led to some confusion. That was really just an introduction. It was almost a, a white canvas. People construed that to mean that we were pushing for a white building, maybe to mimic the Excellus Building. That couldn't be further from the truth. As you know, Holmes King and Caughwist is the lead architect on the project. They are in the process of creating elevation drawings. They will come up with specific materials that we will use as a facade on the buildings. I'm not going to say there might be some white on the building, but I can assure you they're not going to be white in any fashion to duplicate the Excelsis Building.
Just want to add that, you know, our Kepler Freeman, we've worked with the board on many other projects just so the public's aware, we bring our architect that represents the project to the table, but we work with the Town of Dewitt Board, which is fortunate to have several architects on the board. So there's a, there's a back and forth. We're not going to just come back with a white building or a, you know, a certain color building. There's going to be a lot of back and forth to decide how, to work out how it fits best, the neighborhood, the character, and the style. So that, that is to be determined and will be an ongoing part of this process. I just wanted to throw that in, that it's interactive, it's not us guessing or stating what we want. It's, it's a team approach.
Sure. And we'll take under advisement the town concept. I know there's some preliminary ideas and opinions about Shopping Town and so forth. So we will, I think our goal here is to make the project Canal Crossing of Dewitt kind of the benchmark and to set up a nice precedent for what is to soon hopefully occur with the redevelopment of Shopping Town Mall. That said, as part of Holmes King and Caughwist Directive, they're working on the scaling of the buildings. So all of this is a work in progress. Tonight, I don't have anything to share with you other than within a very short matter of a couple of weeks, I think we'll revisit the board and we'll have all this information to provide in a public format as far as the architecture. And we will at that time also address the parking ratios so that they're in conformity with the type of project that we're proposing here. But I will say that we're really excited with the project. I think it is a compliment to the area. Since the article appeared in the Post Standard, I've received numerous calls from business people who have applauded what we're attempting to do here with the upscale apartments. We're gonna basically put a lot of folks in that area with a high level of discretionary income to support the businesses, retail, restaurants, and so forth, which is very much needed at this point. And a lot of the people who called said, you know, we're looking at maybe possibly starting a business into it and see this as a nice compliment or would be very supportive to, you know, starting a business into it. So this is kind of where we are as of today. And I think within a matter of a short weeks, once the traffic study is completed, I think the architectural rendings will be at a stage where we can share that information and we'll address all the other concerns on the part of the neighbors and the board as well at that time.
I just want to add one thing relative to the parking ratio. The parking ratio really, really is driven by the user. And what we want to do to the, for the community and the board is show precedence. There's a lot of precedence throughout the country where they have these models based on the size of the unit, the number of bedrooms in the unit, and there's a, there's a relationship between the two. And we're, we're prepared to, you know, if you get bigger units, you might have less units, you have smaller units, you might have more parking, but, but this site does have a limitation. One thing I can tell you is we are not going to take, take apart that, that big embankment which serves as a great buffer between the lower development and the upper development. You know, buffering, just like the architecture, the site's going to go through a give and take with, with the board. So we're, you know, I know in the meeting, earlier meetings, we said 144, there were, there were 140. The number can't be set just yet, but it's not going to be 180 and it's not going to be five. It's going to be, you know, we have to work, step the site, step the building into the site. I could tell you this, our firm does a lot of housing and most of it is, is level, flat rectangular buildings. This, this build, these buildings have a lot of interest and we're going to take advantage of the site and really maximize the view shed and do whatever we can to tuck it into the hillside. So I guess I can't stress enough that this is the beginning of a design process for, you know, a very worthwhile and beneficial project, in our opinion.
The, to conclude, the last point would be the proposal that we will be submitting to the town. And it really is required for financing and viability of the project. I like to think we've done our due diligence. So we will be supporting or supplying to the town the demographics, our target audience, rents, and that type of thing that will support the project. But obviously, if we weren't confident that this is a viable project, we wouldn't have undertaken it and certainly wouldn't be looking at a project of this nature with the cost and so forth in today's climate if it weren't viable. So we'll have all that information when we submit the rest of the information that's been asked.
Waste of time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I'm gonna, I know this isn't a public informational hearing, but, but it is open to the public. I'm gonna ask the planning board first, any members would like to add anything to what they've already said as to what you might want to see relative to their response and questions and make sure that that's covered. And then afterwards, if there's anything new to add, the member of the public, I saw that there was a hand raised, we can certainly respond. I don't want to repeat anything that's been asked for, but if there's something new that they want to add to this, we're happy to do so.
I will just add, I'm appreciative of the coordination that this project will take with the town. I mean, I think just a constant level of communication will help, you know, us in our decision-making process. So the more information you can get us, the much better it is.
Thank you.
And I would add that I'm glad to hear what you said tonight. I think the confusion came particularly with the color because Vaughn Lang said it was going to be white to match the Excelsis Building. So I'm very happy to hear that and I'm happy that you're looking at materials as well to fit more into the neighborhood. So we look forward to hearing all that.
Kathy, I, I think that's when you have a lawyer pretending to be an architect.
I cannot disagree with that, Tom.
Okay, enough said.
I think it was alluded to, I'll just interject before I forget. You know, the massiveness of the first building on, on the four stories and how that will be mitigated. I know that there's been some comment, but I wanted to make that to the public that the planning board is, is also concerned about that impact of that location on Kenny and its proximity to, to the street and to the homes. So that was something.
We did, we did relay that comment to the architect and they're looking at either sliding some of the units downhill or, you know, we, we might end up going down, reducing our unit count one or two. You know, to make it financially viable, we gotta make it all work. But we are very aware of the need to step and make this fit, especially on the upper portion of the site. We realize that. That's, that's the residential component of the neighborhood, really, right there.
Last thing that I want to add before I turn, I'll back over to the planning board was the, the other recreational easement, conservation easement that would be an important element of this and complement both the Shopping Town as well as this, this particular site. So having said that, I see Doug, you have something you were gonna raise, Doug, or?
Just so that I understand what the next steps are going to look like, this is what I heard tonight, is that a traffic study scope will be drafted up, reviewed with the planning board engineer and the town engineer, presumably maybe floated through the planning board. That would be reviewed and agreed upon, next steps. And then that planning, that traffic study would be undertaken. We don't know the duration would be needed. And then those results will be provided back to us before we would then make the next step recommendation. Okay. On this, right?
Yes.
Yes, it sounds like a good.
I thought, one of the reasons just for, for that, to have that as a condition of the resolution, although it would work, it left too much uncertainty. So I, I really felt that, that there's several, the architectural, the parking, all of the issues that the planning board and the neighbors have brought out. We had some satisfaction in some and some uncertainties in others. And so I didn't want to leave any uncertainties. I looked for something that's going to be a complete report that will include, you know, architectural drawings, colors, sketches, the traffic study, a full traffic study that is, is not something that the applicant just prepares, pairs in conjunction with what our engineers cite. And if there's anything else that comes up, we're happy to include that. We, we want something very complete. This is something that is a very important element of the town and we want to protect it and, and make sure it has every opportunity to succeed. Anybody else? Kevin, Kathy's talk, Nathan, you, you commented. Joe?
This is Kevin. No, I'm.
No, I think just the traffic study. I mean, that, that is, that is a concern with everybody involved, so I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Nick or Andy, do you have anything for the administrative side?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, I think there's a hand that came up. Stephanie, do you want to?
That's right, there's actually a few that have queued up. I think Bonnie was the first to raise a hand.
Bonnie's hand, so yeah, Bonnie, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for taking the time to review this. We'd like to request that the materials that are being submitted by the applicant be posted online promptly for review of the neighborhood, neighbors. This is a traditional, single-family residential area on both Dewitt Acres and Jonathan Craig Estates. While we do have a traditional architect texture in our neighborhoods, our objection is not to the color of this monstrosity that's being submitted. It's to the destruction of our neighborhoods. We feel that we are entitled to, because you were changing completely the character of these neighborhoods, we would like to promptly be provided with any and all information submitted by the applicant. We'd like to have the opportunity to provide the concerns of the people in the neighborhood and have the opportunity to address the issues that should be addressed by this board if it were concerned about the interests of the neighborhood, the zoning issues that are not being addressed. So we'd like to request that those, that the information be made public and that we have the opportunity to address the zoning issues which are not being addressed.
Okay, well, the zoning issues will, are being addressed, but I will tell you that the materials and anything that's provided to us. Nick and Andy, would you make sure that that gets posted online?
Yep.
In a prompt fashion, so the materials, there's, there's a substantial delay in materials being, being posted.
As soon as we have it and as soon as they're able to do it, we'll, we'll turn it around. Is there, Stephanie, go ahead. I'll let you carry the, thank you, thank you, Ben.
Right, I'm actually wondering if maybe Nick could speak to the process of material submission and the area of the town website, where that can be found?
Yeah, so we typically do receive all application materials 10 days prior to the actual planning board meeting. So for example, this review cycle, we received all materials on May 3rd. So at that time, materials do typically get uploaded if there is anything new. I know for the Butternut project specifically, we've had some old information that's been maintained on the site. And the site that is on, the information on the site is the Town of Dewitt Ecode website. And there is a link on the main homepage to the Ecode website. And that is the way the plans can be accessed.
Nick, the information isn't on the website anymore. The file was taken down. The only thing on the website right now is the most recent letter.
Okay, well, Bonnie will work to get all the information back up as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, next up, I believe, was Susan O'Donnell.
Okay. Living in Dewitt Acres has gotten to be no fun at all. Between, Wilmarite has been, was a terrible neighbor and then you all know about the last one there. All, all we need is more hassle from an ugly, yes, ugly, I don't care what color it is. Bunch of buildings. And then there's the traffic on Butternut. If Blue Crush Bluefield ever goes back to full strength at their building, we have enough trouble with speeding on Butternut as it is and people running through the stop signs. And no decision should be made until Shopping Town is decided upon.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you. You have another hand or two?
It's like Anne Donahue has a hand raised and then a question came in via chat after that.
Okay, Anne? Anne, are you muted?
It looks like we might have scared her away. Pardon, her name just dropped off the list.
Okay, about the chat, why don't you read the chat?
She is still here. I just lowered the hand.
Oh, okay.
Anne, do you want to chime in? Anne, if you potentially called in on a telephone line and are just like connected for the display, it's possible that I muted one of the lines that was having some feedback or background noise. So you might have to call back. Let's go to the question via chat.
Okay.
And the question asked by John is, where do you plan to tap in for sewer and water for the project?
Good question.
Scott?
Prelimarily, we've spoken with the Town of Dewitt. We're not, I just want to point this out. We've had a preliminary conversation with the Town of Dewitt and other resources and mapping. So I don't have a complete answer, but if that's a condition and something we should look into, we certainly will. Prelimarily, we were told there, there is capacity. But from a final engineering sign-off perspective, I can't say that it's an approved connection, but there are two, that's going to take further investigation. So we preliminarily, yes, there are places to connect based on initial discussions, but it's going to take much more engineering and much more calculation and discussion that will be addressed and will be reviewed. I'd say one further question. If we could, like Stephanie did with Nick, could we kind of set up a protocol for questions being asked from the community? Because my engineer's been getting phone calls and texts as our office has. So could we set up a protocol for the questions to go to one location?
Alice?
Okay, why don't you mute those if you can, Stephanie?
Yeah.
I'll work with Andy.
I'm meeting about that.
I'll work with Andy and Jamie for, and Nick for, for whatever protocols would be appropriate in this situation.
I mean, in all honesty, Peter, I think any correspondence should be filtered through the town and disseminated to us at that point.
And I think we could comment that way, Scott, that, that we'll just go through the town and that way we'll be sure we have everything.
And we'll write a preliminary response on those connections.
Okay. All right. I think Stephanie, are we all, are we clear?
I, I think if the caller was able to rejoin, I'm sorry, was that Anne? There's just one last question that might have been hanging out there. I guess not.
Okay. Well, I thank you all. I appreciate it. And we're going to keep pressing forward and, and making sure that we have a complete and comprehensive review. And whether we recommend or not will depend upon the information that, that we've requested and the neighbors have requested. And I'm sure that the town board will be very interested in as well. So thank you. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'll move, Peter, I'll move to close.
Yeah, I'll move to.
I'll second.
Thank you. Dari is not around, so she can't second it. Have a great night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.